Good morning, everyone. It is April first. Just imagine the, the tricks that could be played on you today. So, um, we are going to begin our meeting. Uh, first, I would like to remind people to silence your cell phones as it's a courtesy to others. So, please make sure that you do that. And, uh, let's start with a pledge. Um, Commissioner Taraswell, would you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, let's do roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Taraswell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I am here. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
We do. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in notice of liquor license for La Palapa to Mexican Grill. And Sarah North submitted an advisory board application for the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees.
Alright, thank you. And let's move on to item number five. Um, this is the time we set aside for citizen input. We have a fifteen minute limit, three minutes per person is what we request. Um, if, when I call on you, not if, when I call on you, um, please state your name, uh, where you're from. And make sure that you speak loud so that McKenzie can get your name. We'll start in the room here first. If anyone would like to raise their hand and address the commission?
Hi, I'm Dave Mortensen. I live here in Mason County, uh, longtime teacher in the area. And, uh, I'm here just to kind of report what we've been working on out of Highway Three. Uh, we continue to work out there. Um, just as I came in this morning, I noticed there's another tenant popped up right where we were gleaning and, uh, totally frustrating. As I've, uh, gotten to look at this problem more in the homeless camps that are popping up all over there, um, took a little tour of the county, or just a small tour, there's homeless camps up behind Shelton Athletic Club. Actually, quite a number of them. If you go, uh, Sierra Pacific and they, uh, you know where our pump station is, back on the railroad there, there's numerous camps along between the railroad tracks and the water and right on the water. So, um, I'm gonna turn my hearing aids down here. Um, and you know where all the waste is going, right in the waterway. Uh, it's, it's, it's a huge problem. And I think, uh, now that on Highway Three where the leaves are starting to come out, uh, nature will cover up some of it. But the problem doesn't go away. We're still needles, furniture, all kinds of stuff. We hauled off, uh, a bunch of stuff and put it over across the street where the city will pick it up for us. Um, but then again, it's not going away unless we move these people out of there. Uh, it's, it's so much bigger than, uh, our small little group can handle. And, uh, we need your help. I, we've got to address it somehow. Uh, I'm, you know, I don't have the answer, but we, we can't, you know, look the other way. Um, if we don't, this just will continue to grow and grow and grow. I guess that's what I have to say. Um, please, you know, let's, let's figure this out. Alright, thank you.
Before you're done, okay. Uh, excuse me, do you, could you, the stuff you mentioned is mostly all City of Shelton. We don't have any forty's there. But I'd be curious if you could have your group maybe do a, come up with some ideas on things that maybe we can look at to do that actually would have the effect you're looking for. Be open-minded to hearing some of that stuff.
I can tell you now, what, what I was, we're in the process of, a couple of us are doing, is we're actually mapping out and getting the exact location of these camps and putting a pin marker on with GPS location device. So, we, we are knowing where, who owns this land, uh, that it's on. One of the biggest camps is owned by the City of Shelton, the land does, at least the preliminary looking, uh, you know, what we're seeing. Uh, we're just getting started doing that. Uh, so you and I, I mean, I can't have a damp, I can't dump all my garbage in front of my house. Uh, then possibly the, um, I think the solution is going after the landowners that are allowing this to happen. We, you know, we just, just can't do it. I, there was one other thing I found just surprising. They built what appears to be, uh, in the trees, an outhouse. And the outhouse is elevated over a ravine and all their human excrement goes right down in the gully that washes right down into Oakland Bay. You know, I've been out there and I've stepped in raw sewage, but covered my boot. And I tell you what, uh, that'll get your attention. Uh, and so. We're polluting the bay and I know in the past they just did like, I know, thousands of dollars to clean up that bay. Uh, yet, we let this, you know, turn our, look away. You know, thousands of cars go by, uh, Highway Three every day. And just go, just go and, and, uh, in the yacht club parking lot and look up on the, on the hillside. You'll see it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else in the commission chambers would like to address the commission?
Hello, I am Catherine Johnson from the Humane Society of Mason County. I'm the executive director. And, um, I am just here to share, I sent a letter to the commissioners. Um, I hope you have all had time to read it to just express the Humane Society of Mason County's interest in providing animal control services for Mason County. We have really worked hard in our county to provide sheltering services for animals in times of crisis and worked hard on providing program services for our local, um, first responders. We work diligently on cases with the Sheriff's Department and with the local fire department as well as the DSHS office and other nonprofits throughout the community. We have taken in hundreds of animals from Mason County every year. We are very committed to this county. We took in nine hundred and thirty-four animals last year alone and we are no kill. Everyone gets adopted out. And we provide a adoption resource for our community at a reasonable price for our community, which is again another aspect that this community loves and needs. Um, we offer a, we have a span neuter clinic in Belfair um, that provides surgery four days a week. We have provided fourth, uh, over four thousand surgeries last year alone. Um, this in, uh, this month, it's April already. This month, we will perform our ten thousandth span neuter surgery out of our clinic in Belfair. We are very proud of that and we have a very dedicated staff of ten who is here and committed to Mason County. So, I just want to make sure that I'm showing up and present and making sure that everyone knows the hard work that we are doing. Um, and while we are located in Belfair, we touch all ends of Mason County. Uh, I, we take a lot of dogs from Matlock, even parts of Alma that are Mason County, Hootsport. So, Lily Wop, um, we are, we are very committed to the county as a whole. And we want to make more of a presence here in Shelton as well. So, I just wanted to come today and talk and thank you all so much for accepting my letter. And I hope we are in more communications.
Thank you. Alright, do we have anyone else in the room that would like to?
Hi, Shelley Willis with Community Education and Support Services. And I'm here to talk about the proclamation or maybe lack of proclamation addressing child abuse and neglect. I hope you will still consider it. Uh, children are the foundation for a prosperous and innovative society. And unfortunately, Mason County, our child abuse rates are very high, higher than the state average. We planted over two thousand pinwheels at the state capitol last week because our state believes in recognizing our most vulnerable population. I hope that you will too.
Thank you. Alright, do we have anyone else in the room?
Have a question.
Sure.
At what point do you ask for an action agenda item to be discussed?
That comes a little bit later. Thank you. Alright, do we have anyone in the Zoom room that would like to address the commission? Anyone at all? Alright, let's move on down. Um, item number six, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of today's agenda as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the minutes of March third, March tenth, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Briefing minutes and March fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, I will second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the minutes of March third, March tenth, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five briefing minutes, March fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Sorry. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It works like a hatchet.
Motion passes. I'm sorry. I, I just have this rule that I like phones silenced. And then when they pop up, it just, I don't know why, that it just kind of makes me giggle or shake my head, but here we go. Alright, let's move on to approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Um, items can be removed for separate discussion and vote. Um, commissioners will read through the, work through the agenda and then I'll ask if there's any items that would like to be removed. Commissioner Netherland, please read eight point one through eight point three. Commissioner Taraswell, eight point four through eight point seven. And I will finish up by reading eight point eight and nine.
Happily, Madam Chair. Item number eight point one reads approval of warrants and treasures, electronic remittance claims, clearing fund. Warrants number eight, one, 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 four, seven, seven through eight, one, 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 seven, four, two. The amount, one million, seven hundred fifty thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and sixty-two cents. Direct deposit fund warrants number one, one, four, eight, two, seven through one, one, five, two, three, four. The amount, nine hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollar, thirty-five dollars and four cents. Salary clearing fund warrants number seven, zero, zero, eight, seven, eight, two through seven, zero, zero, eight, eight, zero, seven. The amount, six hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Item number eight point two, approval of memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Mason County Youth Baseball Association, MCYBA, to store baseball equipment and material. Uh, the price is one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, eighty-eight cents per year. Item number eight point three, approval to replace wood chip mulch, EWF, with rubber mulch at both Walker and Union Park for the estimated amount of thirty thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-three cents, utilizing real estate excise tax REIT funds, uh, REIT two funds.
Item eight point four, approval of the inter-local agreement, ILA, with Lewis County Coroner's Office for the autopsy facility rental. Eight point five, approval of the amended resolution number two, zero, two, five, dash, zero, zero, five to update county road projects, twenty, tw- uh, twenty sixty Matlock Brady Road Improvement Project to increase project limits to the cost of one million, six hundred thousand. Eight point six, approval of the chair to sign the Shelton Urban Growth Areas UGA Water Utility Extension Agreement with Evergreen Mobile Home, Mobile Homeowners Cooperative. And item eight point seven, approval of the resolution amending the Mason County Personnel Policy as proposed.
Item eight point eight, approval of the letters of support for Public Utility District One. Funding request for the Jorsted Substation Grid Resiliency Project for Congressional Direct Spending and Community Project Funding. Eight point nine, approval of the letter of support for the Mason County Economic Development Council's application for funding through the Washington State Department of Commerce's Child Care Partnership Program. Okay, commissioners, any items you would like to have removed for separate discussion or vote?
Madam Chair, I'd like to, uh, remove item eight point three. The approval to replace the wood chips with rubber mulch. Pending further investigation based on the email we received from, uh, Erica Marbet.
And I would like to remove item eight point seven, uh, regarding the personnel policy. Alright. Anyone, anybody in the audience, any items they would, they would like to have removed?
We were going to discuss the wood chip mulch.
Oh, okay.
So, does that mean we leave now or?
Nope.
No, we're just not going to approve it.
Right. Yep, hold on just a moment.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have to be removed because we just get it. Alright, any other items? Anyone in the Zoom room like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? Alright.
Madam Chair, just want to make sure that she, was the mulch your issue?
Perfect. Alright, commissioners?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda items, uh, in its entirety minus item number eight point three and eight point seven, which will be, uh, done separately.
Alright, and motion and a second to approve items eight point one through eight point nine with the exception of item eight point three and eight point seven. Any discussion or? No?
No.
Alright, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, let's move on to item eight point three. This is approval to replace wood chip mulch with rubber mulch at both Walker Park and Union Park for the estimated amount of thirty thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars, sixty-three cents utilizing real estate excise tax two funds. And ask staff to talk to us.
Mark Neri, Mason County Administrator. Um, so this is a, this project was something that we were looking into through our parks department. Uh, every year, we have to go and, and replace the wood chips that are in the areas and we were looking at alternatives. So, one of the alternatives, um, that we had looked at and investigated was these rubber mulch pellets. We did some initial, um, research on the pellets and, and really we're looking at it from a cost perspective. So, how long do they last? How well do they stay within the defined area? Um, what is that economy of scale of like? So, they're more expensive than the wood chips, but they lasted for like fifteen years. So, when we looked at it from a cost perspective and I would say preliminary research on, um, the, the health and, and concerns that might be with these, with these pellets. Um, we had recommended that the board approve us allowing to replace, uh, the wood chips with two, in, in two of our parks, Walker and Union, thank you. Um, apparently, we have some additional comments that we've received from the Squawson Tribe as well as we have some constituents here. So, I'd be happy to, to hear what their questions are and, uh, maybe go out and do a little more research before we actually make this decision.
Alright, does anyone have questions for staff? Commissioners, questions for staff? Alright, I am going to ask folks to come on up to the pulpit if you'd like. Pulpit sounds really.
Podium.
Podium, thank you.
I'll manage.
Please state your name for the record and where you're from.
Uh, William McTurnal, and I'm from Mason County. Uh, I've got a BS from University of Maryland. I've also been in business here in Mason County for over thirty years. Many of you know me. Honorable, and you, ma'am, as well. Um, I'm also an elected member of the Kalits Indian Tribe. I'm on their council and have been for a while. And just like the Squawsons, it's very, very important to us, what you all do with your land and our land. Some of the studies that I've made in the past suggest to me that many of the ingredients used in manufacturing tires and subsequent grinding tires could be hazardous to the health of all of our persons, citizens. And I would ask you, would you like your children at the playground to pile, you know, to file or to fall on a, on a pile of trumps or would you like them to fall on some wood chips? One of the things that I'd like to consider as well, uh, staff, you referred to the economy of this project, is the fact that wood chips, if you get them from us actually, or, uh, wood mulch is actually free. You see, it's not thirty thousand dollars. It's, and we give you all you want at no cost. Now, you can take the trucking or you can pay us to do the trucking, but the cost of materials, zero. And if you use wood chips or if you use, excuse me, the product that we manufacture, the mulch, as we all know, just those of you who have used the Huff and Puff Trail here in Shelton, which I have for over thirty years now, it decomposes, becomes one with the earth, and you add more. It's not like some rubber or plastic product that lord knows when it should ever disintegrate. And what are we doing to our environment? And the fact that we would even suggest to use tire products for our playgrounds or for our pathways, to me, is absolutely ridiculous. If we were in New York or we were in Los Angeles and we didn't have all this wood waste, then we might consider some other sort of thing. But when you are in the timber capital of the world and we're finding ways to get rid of wood waste, why would we even think of using something that could be potentially hazardous? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would provide comment?
Yes.
If you saw that smug look on our employees' face, that would, because he doesn't do this.
Please state your name.
Pretty special.
I am Ian Tracy of Shelton, not representing the department. Uh, so, first of all, I want to say sorry, John Taylor, you're not here today. Uh, but I want to thank him for his efforts to try to find efficiencies in, you know, to use Mason County's, uh, tax funding for good purposes. However, I don't think that this is the best, uh, purpose for that. This product, in case you weren't aware, uh, from Mr. McTurnal's statements, is shredded waste tires. And shredded waste tires are made of a lot of terrible stuff. Uh, there are notably harmful chemicals such as, uh, metals that are neurotoxic, neurotoxic, PAHs, which are, uh, cancer-causing chemicals, uh, six PPDQ, which kills fish. That's been recently discovered to kill fish and salmon streams. Uh, and they slowly degrade into microplastics. So, those microplastics go into shellfish. They eventually wash down to the shore, which is particularly concerning with Walker Park. Uh, in twenty twenty, a similar material was used at a construction project in Pierce County. And they had a fine for half a million for ecology and one million for EPA because the material accidentally washed into, um, the Gull River. So, it's, it's not great. Uh, EPA and the Consumer Product Safety Commission have a study that they started in twenty sixteen. And they're going through multiple sta- stages in that study. It's not conclusive. Um, they are, they have established that there are many, many, many toxic chemicals in tires, but everyone knows that. Um, and, uh, they're looking at safety, but it's, it's not concluded yet. Um, in Mason County, uh, just, as Mr. McTurnal said, you know, we are a massive producer of forest products. There's so much wood chips, um, and passing up that safe, sustainable resource seems unwise to me. Uh, especially when tires, I, I've been to many parks all over the country, um, with my kids. And the, the playgrounds that have tire mulch, it will start out great, you know, it looks beautiful when you first set it up. But it, it just, it degrades and it goes everywhere. It never stays on the playground, never stays in that play area, gets kicked out. And when wood chips get kicked out of the play area, they decay and they enrich the ground, they, you know, enhance the grass. When rubber mulch gets out there, it just gets tangled up with the grass and it stays there forever. I've been to parks that have used rubber mulch where it's gone hundreds of yards down the hill and into the water and the streams. Um, and many parks that I've seen that have had tire mulch, um, you know, ones that I went to as a kid, they have since gone through huge remediation projects to remove all that tire mulch. So, it's, it's a problem. I think we're setting ourselves up for the future, uh, in addition to the chemicals that are reached. And when you think about it, at the end of the day, you're taking trash, shredding it up, painting it a fancy color and then saying, hey, kids, go play in this trash. Because that's, that's really what it is. No, no product is manufactured for children using recycled tires where you're like, hey, I'm gonna make this kid's toy out of recycled tires because the constituents that go into that are not great. They are not a parent material for children's toys and our children are playing on that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was fun, wasn't it?
Would anyone else like to comment?
Good morning. Um, I'm Wendy Matthews. I work in the Public Health Office, Mason County Public Health. Um, but I'm speaking as a private citizen today, um, about eight point three. Um, I have three points, uh, two of which were already spoken about. But, um, I work with wood waste recyclers and, um, with the addition of the mills, the paper mills closing, it's, it's harder to find markets and this is such a clear use of, of wood product like wood chips. Um, the exposure of the children to the tire material or rubber material as it degrades, it just becomes more and more and more dusty and particulate and gets thrown out into the grass. And, um, carcinogenic, water quality, those have already been spoken about. Um, my last thing was, uh, about the costs. Um, if I used, uh, Mr. Taylor's numbers in the example, the total cost, twenty-one thousand plus ten thousand, five hundred for labor equals thirty-one thousand, five, back of the napkin. Um, and over twelve years, it would, it would cost about twenty-six hundred, uh, dollars per year. For the rubber mulch, though, it's eighteen thousand for the initial, twenty-six hundred for labor, twenty thousand, seven hundred total over twelve years. And divided up, that would be seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. Real rough, but it's only a savings of like a thousand dollars a year. And at the end of the twelve years or the lifespan of the rubber, you not only have to redo the whole process, take it all out, find whatever's in the grass, which I doubt would be done, and then reconstruct the whole thing for the amount of money that they are initially. So, we're, the wood chips, they're, you don't have to worry about the final disposition of the wood chips. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else?
Yeah, I will.
My name is Lisa. I work with, um, both Bill McTurnal and Five Guys Escaping. We have, we create mulch and as Bill was saying, it's free. Either you provide the trucking and you just come pick it up or you can pay us to haul it to wherever you want. Um, we have a lot of farmers that come and get it. They make their pathways. They put it around the base of their trees. It looks nice. It breaks down to dirt. It's healthy for the trees. Um, it's just good for the environment. As a citizen, I live in Union, adjacent to the Union Park. The water runoff that we get in our yard from that park is ridiculous. I would not want those chemicals running into my backyard. Um, it just, that would be scary. And if you follow the water path, it goes right down to the canal, which we all hear on the news and everything, the low oxygen rates that are depleting the, the sea life. And is that gonna add to that? Is that gonna create more problems? So, that's it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Alright, do we have anyone else in the room that would like to comment? Alright, let's go, go into the Zoom room. Anyone in the Zoom room would like to comment on item eight point three? Not seeing anyone. Alright, commissioners, discussion or possible motion?
Um, one of the ways this could be dispatched is by no motion and, uh, it would die for a lack of emotion. And it would die for a lack of motion. So I'm not prepared to make a motion at this time.
Certainly, we couldn't proceed without more study because I didn't, I didn't get this warning from John. So I definitely want to look at it. Protecting the, protecting the people and protecting the environment are really important, so.
Well, I'm not going to make a motion either. No, but I do want to express my appreciation to everyone that has come in to and sent in their comments. We don't know what we don't know. And so by public participation, coming in and talking with us, you guys help make our job maybe not easier, but you make us wiser. And so I appreciate you coming in and speaking with us. And wow, that's pretty cool. Yeah, so I knew about tire dust. So I was hesitant, but anyway, just thank you all for coming in and speaking on this. And please stay in touch.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
So this dies for lack of motion?
Lack of motion. All right, let's move on to item eight point seven. This is the approval of the resolution amending the Mason County personnel policy as proposed. Ask staff to come forward and present. You can do it very quickly.
I don't have Mary here, so Mark, Mary, Mason County District. So periodically, Human Resources goes through the personnel policy. And throughout the year, we identify issues that need to be cleared up or clarified in our personnel policies. And so this really was an attempt to make some changes to reflect best practices, clarification of what is currently being practiced, and ensure that the document is organized and updated appropriately. So if we find grammar errors or verbiage that's not clear, periodically, we will go through. And so there's a number of changes that are throughout this. But apparently, there's some additional items that we'd like to take a look at from the commission.
Yes, yes. All right, any questions for staff?
Questions for you, I'm waiting.
I do. Anyone in our audience or in the Zoom room having any questions for Mark? All right, I do.
Shoot.
Actually, I would like it to be. I'm not, I don't really have any questions for you. Just a comment, one hundred and thirty-one pages. And honestly, I have not had the time to sit down and really look through it. We've been working on this thing for three years now. And I'm just not comfortable with some of the, I don't feel comfortable passing it without me being able to fully look through it and either add, delete, or, or.
Would you be comfortable if I was to ask to table it for one month?
A month would work, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Would you like to make that motion now or?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I move that we table this issue for one month and a little pair back on the calendar, one month perhaps with changes to review. I'll second that. I've found more grammatical errors even, you know, as I've been trying to read through it. And I'm maybe a little more than halfway through, but there's still errors that we're finding, so.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second to table this item eight point seven, approval of the resolution amending the Mason County Personnel Policy as proposed for one month. Further discussion? All right, a call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Fantastic, thank you. All right, let's move on to item number nine. This is the time we set aside for our department heads and elected officials to talk to us. Of course, they're welcome to talk to us anytime, but, or do we have any elected officials or department heads in the room?
There's some mulch. Morning, Commissioner Steve Dunkel.
I'm sorry, your honors. These were supposed to have been presented. These are samples of the tire mulch, crumbs, and of the mulch. Sorry for the interruption.
No worries, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Dunkel, Mason County Auditor. Hey, I just have two things. Yesterday, ballots went out for the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five special election. There's only one measure on the ballot. It's a, it's a property tax levy for fire protection district seventeen. So only voters in that district will receive ballots. It's about five hundred ballots that went out. But hope everybody gets their ballot and is able to successfully fill it out and send it in. If anyone needs help, just let us know. Second, I wanted to give you an update on our passport service. Our passport calendar remains booked solid. And for our first quarter this year, the team's brought in over twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars in county revenue. That's all I got.
If I can, what do you think makes a difference? We went through this and we brought it in to bring in revenue. Then for years, it did not. We moved it over to you and all of a sudden, there's revenue. It's booked out. Did you do something in particular different or?
What's the difference between the current state and the previous?
Yeah.
Oh, we just have an amazing team and people love to come and visit. And, you know, actually, there's, there is a lot of volume right now from customers who are getting passports for their children in anticipation, so I'm told of, of being asked to return to their home country. So there's a nonstop stream of that. But in addition to that, we have a great staff and they do a great job.
So that twenty-eight thousand, that is from when to when?
First quarter this year.
That's just for the one quarter.
Through yesterday.
I would imagine that the real ID for travel is also impacting. So there's a requirement to have a.
I haven't, I haven't had that particular reason brought to my attention, but it would not surprise.
Yeah, so there's a requirement to take air travel that's coming up here pretty quick.
Coming up this year, yeah.
That says that you either have to have a passport or a real ID to actually travel on airlines. So I'd imagine that would be one thing. I would also imagine that with the auditor's office, Auditor Dunkel gets a lot of traffic in there for various other things. Vehicle registrations, license tabs, recording property transactions. So much more.
People come back year after year. It's amazing.
Much more robust individual from Mason County Public coming into the auditor's office than the clerk's office. So clerk's office, really, if you're in the courthouse, you're there for court or some legal proceeding. And so I think that the volume of people that are going to the clerk's office is much smaller. So I would, I would imagine that the people that are coming into the auditor's office, the real ID requirements that are coming up, and the fact that he has amazing staff that do an amazing job is all adding to the fact that, that people are wanting to get passports as well as the issue that Auditor Dunkel noted with people trying to.
People actually make up reasons to come visit the staff.
I bet. They're super nice. I do all the time.
Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you very much and thanks, Mark, for the additional insight.
Thank you, Auditor. Do we have any other department heads or electeds in the room that would like to say anything, anything at all?
I just, I just really appreciate the public coming in and providing input on the rubber mulch. That is something that, that I thought we were looking into in terms of the health concerns or were there health concerns? I remember hearing that back in the day when we first went to turf field or, yeah, artificial turf fields. And there was a lot of questions about the type of rubber pellets that were utilized in those fields and potentially having negative health impacts on soccer players and things like that. And so I asked those questions. I think that the research that was done, that this is different than those. But I will definitely go and do some additional verification. And there's some very valid points. Our, we have a lot of wood byproduct. I also think that one of the, one of the factors that we took into consideration was the labor associated with maintaining the wood chips as opposed to some alternative form of fill for those areas. But definitely appreciate the feedback from the public and happy to go back and do additional research on where are these things coming from? Are they actually coming from recycled tires? Do they have the potential breakdown in chemicals that are concerned, that individuals are concerned? Because they are, our parks are very close to our waterways. And I absolutely could see kids playing in the playground as they go out of the playground. They're tracking these pieces of this out into the grass and down into the, to the water areas. So if there is a concern about that, definitely. Appreciate the public bringing it up.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too, me too. All right, anyone in our Zoom room? Any electeds or department heads? Going, going, gone. All right. Well, moving on to item number ten. We do not have any public hearings scheduled at this time. So let's move on to item number eleven, Boards, Calendars, and Reports. Commissioner Taraswell, if you'd go first. Commissioner Netherland, and then I'll follow.
Yeah, I guess I need to pull that up.
Or you could just do it off memory.
Yeah, I don't think so. Well, I will be heading off to Texas after this meeting. So I will be gone. I won't make it to the next meeting on Monday. I'll be flying back from Texas. Brother that's diagnosed with Parkinson's, so I'm going back to see him. But following Tuesday, I have a MaceCom board meeting. Then I have IT Steering Committee on Wednesday. Thursday is EDC, Next Steps Collaboration Meeting. And then a sheriff's lunch on Thursday. I actually have a blank day on Friday. Wow.
What?
An empty day? This is like impossible. Then on Saturday, I have a criminal justice working teams meeting. Can't believe we have a criminal justice meeting on Saturday. Following Monday, briefing and then a PAC meeting. I don't need to go that far into the future. That'll do.
A little backtrack for the last week or so. Legal with voters. Attended the Washington local planning for housing. Still got to figure out whether I'm supposed to be there or not because we were supposed to be on there. I sat through that whole thing and it was pretty interesting. So Mason Transit Authority were all at. Fire Department four, I attended. North Mason Chamber of Commerce. We had a government-to-government meeting with the Squawson Tribe, which I thought was pretty, pretty wonderful. I appreciate them having. And I look forward to their next invitation for us to have another one. And they're also going to come do, look at our facilities. And they invited us to look at their facilities. So it was a very good meeting. I was very happy with it. Border Health meeting that we all attended. We also had our very first appeal to border health ruling on a restaurant. And I was awful impressed with everybody involved. I just wanted to say it. Our staff was excellent and, but our commission and our council or border health, I thought they handled it extremely well. I just was proud all the way around on it. And I just wanted to share that with everybody who was involved. I had to go away for three days for risk pool training and different things that are going on with our insurance. One small part of it is going up by twenty-five percent. But as those that do not know, all the insurance rates have been going crazy all through Washington State. One of the reasons why is we don't have limits. And the way it works, it used to be that the attorneys would go ahead and plead out and try to go for something lesser. But now if they win one dollar for their client, they get all their attorney's fees. So they're not, and they've gotten used to that. So they're not backing down on anything anymore. So we have lawsuits that are coming up. Well, the last one was fifty million for a coffee spill. It's not the, it's not the one for McDonald's either, this. But this is what our state is doing. They're finding ways to justify that. Well, it makes it to where you have to have insurance to cover all that. And with the states, it's not that we're doing anything wrong at the counties more than anybody else ever had, but the amount of the settlements are huge. And because of that, there's no free lunch. And that's why rates are going up. But we were able to keep it down. It's just one area where it's going up this time. So I was very happy with that. We also had a change of leadership that is happening and we put somebody else new in. Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority came out to Mason County and did some inspections. And we went and inspected a pellet mill out here. Some awesome jobs and they might need our help to help expand a little bit, but they do some great work out there. Law enforcement and firefighters meeting this morning. After this, I have another meeting with that homeless planning group. So let's find out if that's mine or not. If it's not, tag your in. I'd rather you take that one. But Rotary, WASAC, I get onto those calls. It's actually our committee, but you pick up a lot of good information on there. We have a planning team meeting, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meeting. I want to give a special thank you to Dan Griffey. There was a big push on losing the bypass again. It happens each and every time. And in his role that he serves through transportation, he worked really hard and he was able to keep the bypass still and it makes a big difference. So when you get a chance, give him a thank you. Because I'm telling you, sooner or later, it's going to make a difference. Even if you don't, if you live down here, you don't think you use it. Try using it up there at five o'clock when you try to come to Shelton for any reason. You'll be appreciative of what Dan just did to help keep it in there. So a little thank you for that. That brings us back. We do our briefings and start all over again.
All right, thank you. And I do want to thank staff too for the Board of Health hearing. You guys did an amazing job. I don't know when the last one was that we did, but you did amazing.
I've been here thirteen years. There was no.
It was awesome. It was real good. And we had an interpreter, so it ran very smooth. It was great. It was interesting. It's cool.
Your definition of smooth.
Yeah.
I thought it was fine. All right, so tomorrow, having lunch with my daughter. I am super excited. Don't get to see her very often, but my other daughter. But it's going to be cool. Tomorrow night is the LSC Roundtable. Thursday morning is the LSC meeting, Public Works Board meeting, session meeting with Mark and Deb, having dinner with our sheriff and his beautiful wife. Briefing on Monday, WASAC Virtual Assembly. I'm going to be meeting with a couple of our nonprofits to talk about nonprofit stuff. Dinner with friends, probably out of the casino, I'm thinking. Business after hours, Sheriff's Community Breakfast at the Bistro. PAC Mountain Executive Financial Committee Meeting, Legislative Update, Public Works Board Executive Committee Meeting, another meeting with Mark and Deb. Just can't get enough of them. Briefing again on Monday, Virtual Assembly. And then we're back here for our Tax Day Regular Commission Meeting. So don't forget to pay your taxes. Everybody's favorite topic. All right.
Something I forgot to mention for our guests that came in today. We, in our briefing, we did have a discussion on whether to do proclamations. And we will not be doing proclamations for the rest of the year. But you are welcome to come here and do your proclamation during our meetings so that it can get out there. So, you know, let us extend that invitation to you.
And just to add on to that, it's been our goal this year to make sure that our nonprofits are recognized. And so by you guys coming in and speaking to us, you're seen on TVW, far more broadcast. Oh, I'm sorry. I have session on my brain.
Dietrich is our.
Mason Web TV. He's our Mason County TV, Mason County. I don't know. I tried to cover up. It didn't work. Sorry. Anyway, so that's, that's our goal, is to have our nonprofits come in and, and talk about themselves. Because lots of people don't know what Mason County provides.
Should we ask that they contact that particular nonprofit come and take some special time with us or?
Well, you guys have been, we'll talk about this later. Shall we? Okay, at our next briefing. Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
One of these days, I'll say it.